I run the camera like you got it.
Yeah.
I do a lot of the pictures.
Yeah.
That you can. You have to be my man. You're good.
Oh.
Hold it there a couple of.
And last time we were kind of.
And I have. So I have a day.
Question about something.
Yeah, there's questions.
We did our hands.
It's for.
Morning.
Lady in the picture.
Oh, they're all.
You know, I know.
Shining up.
Good morning.
We do decent. And that's.
And he can.
I probably am. I'm small.
Okay.
You did.
I guess.
How much did you get?
Why would you get this?
Two liter.
Ten thirty five.
About.
Train that they got at Trump. That's. You get a ring.
Hey. Put them back in hospital first.
Can I give them?
Put them back in hospital.
For volunteer hours.
You have private.
They want to give her the volunteer hours.
I don't know if he was going to be slow.
But short of this, it's basically.
Back in hospital.
They're paying you for the services that the volunteer.
Right.
I don't get it. There's a lot of stuff I don't understand. I mean, it is here. To honor the. Morning.
Almost. They told me this. He told me why they fired last week. Last four or three days, he looked like he might be. He was talking. Strange.
Thank you. That was really good.
I guess I'll tell them. You got it. You got it.
Hello. Yes.
Yeah. And I figured out we won't. We didn't have all the way to the. What happened earlier.
I've seen them.
Still, Calvin. You're one of those. Why isn't there?
Anything else? Sure. I felt it there. And I brought. They don't know.
In here, big man. Very. Three thirty four. You're one of those six. I don't think they do. But he did tell us.
A big volunteer.
He was.
Always. That was out here. You've been in there second draft. You're not sure.
Yeah.
The gift number. You've got that. We have a lot of. Probably. You're pretty bad. You must.
It's close.
I think that. We have.
They're definitely catching. All of it. They're all of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
He has. He just.
All right. Me.
That's right.
It's a good.
Rich.
Yes.
You stand for the prayer. Please. Lord God, we come to you now thinking you're alive, healthy, and strength. We come to you blessed in your name because your name waited to be blessed. Father, we come to you knowing that you are God and the Savior. There is no other. And you are too wise to make a mistake. Father, we pray for this county, this country, and this state. Pray for the local officials, and we pray for all officials now that are standing around the world and keeping us out of harm's way. And we thank you now. Fathers, as we make decisions for our citizens, we ask you to bless us and be with us. Keep us and help us only you can do and you will do. And we thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. When the lives of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. And as always, we have a few kids this boy. A conference line has been set up. The number is not one nine one seven one zero two two. Access codes thirty two thirty four seven. Time line. This is not a toll free number. You may be subject to long distance charges accordingly. Long distance plan. If you wish to speak, please dial five. The moderator will unmute your line unless you're concerned to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes to speak. A commenter may speak only once, one time for each agenda item. With that being said.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sir. All the table say aye. With. All right, we move to item twenty one eight. Is that the first thing we want to do? Awarded recognition.
No, sir. We can do it under general business.
Okay. Then we go to consent agenda. Is anything on the consent agenda we want to pick off, talk about, discuss? Anything about it?
Motion to approve.
Once and second, we approve the consent agenda. All of them are saying aye. All right. Okay, we go on to number twelve. Bids and public, last public here. Board to receive bids for the leasing of the two hundred ninety six acres for the harvest of salt palmetto berries in Taylor County, Florida, set for this date at nine AM or soon thereafter.
There are no bids received.
No bid received. What are we going to do about that?
Not going to do that. I don't know berries this year.
We've advertised it.
Fine.
Twice. And we did send a packet to the local harvester.
No one was interested at all.
Actually, I believe.
Didn't you say there's?
I mentioned it. The shop. And he said he was going to turn it in, but then I reckon he couldn't do it.
But the last time they did it was two thousand nineteen.
Could we re-advertise it one more time?
That's up to y'all.
I've heard the market's upside down this year. That might be the reason. I don't.
When was the last time that I ran? Recently? Oh, yeah. Yeah, we. Does it cost us to rebuild?
About fifty six dollars per cycle. So we did it the first time for two advertisements and then on the end of July, beginning of August for two more weeks. I believe the first year we made about, it was less than a thousand dollars. And then the two subsequent years, there wasn't, there were not enough berries to harvest, probably because of either theft or heat or, you know, some environmental factors.
When are they ready? When are they ready to harvest?
Next month. Start next month down south. Get mature quicker and they move up here. They're already up here. What I'm hearing through the grapevine that the thieves is already here picking early berry. So, I mean, you get it on the street. People have, local people be buying them from the people that pick them. And I've heard that, you know, but the market is is bad this year so far, what I've heard, you know. And I, there's a good crop of berry. But that first year, already we made money. We didn't make any money that first year when we buried. The thieves hit the place about a week before he got the time to do it. There's something about five hundred pounds of berry out there and they ruined on the ground. Like somebody must have scared them. They dumped a bunch of them out of there. I mean, there's very various. I looked at it two months ago and I sent them one picture of the berry. There was a bunch of berries on them.
Some of those berries.
Bushes. I mean, they just. I think we need to advertise it one more time. I would not, you know. Maybe somebody else want to do it.
Want to hear something silly?
Yes, sir.
You pick them. Or you pick them and we tell you. You pick them. They're like strawberries or whatever.
It doesn't yield a lot of money to us.
So the two thousand nineteen was, we received nine hundred and seventy six dollars. That's the last time we got anybody off of it.
He got what the thief left that year. I remember him telling me that. The shop. He said, they don't. Well, that's when he found all of them dead, dumped on the ground out there. So.
They're already up here again?
What I've heard on the street, you know, they pick them early, but they're still green. And they let them age a little bit and then mix them in with the mature ones next month. It was what, you know, and they get by with that. But I don't know. I hate to, I hate to miss a chance to get something out of them.
That's the board. I mean, we can advertise it one more time.
I think great. I'll contact my shop. Tell them you need to go ahead and do it.
I emailed the packet to them, I believe. So, I mean, if the board wishes to advertise it one more time, we can advertise it one more time and see what happens.
And we want to.
We, you might could call him and see if there's an issue. Why not do it? I don't mind calling you. Call him and then we waste more, which money advertising it.
We spoke to someone from their company, so. But, I mean, we can, we can advertise it again. That's.
Good. I think that's good.
I know another group that knows it. I reach out to those guys and see if there's any interest.
Okay. So you're going to advertise it one more time. But I have monkey.
Motion to react. Thank you.
Is that all they're saying aye? Aye. Okay. We reactivate one more time, but not have a bunch of salt palmetto berries. What do they do? That little berry and be on that, having the thing turn orange or something.
Yeah, about, about five acres, a little bigger.
Yes.
And they, next month they'll start turning brown. They're green right now. I got a berry in my yard. They're green, pretty green right now. And they'll start turning brown. They're oil in them is what they get out. And that's what they make salt, salt palmetto medicine out of too for prostate problem. That's what.
Is that same tree we used to have on Jackson Street up in East?
That.
That's a dang good one.
The limp almetus, the locust is the one that they make it out of, not the tall.
Okay.
The street, the ones on the road are called dates, date palms.
Oh, weren't they?
Date palms. Like around the church and down Main Street.
Yeah. What are they good for?
Jelly, I think.
You know, you speak those things. You're making. Oh, yeah. You're picking around my. Okay, we'll go to, did we go to thirteen public request? This is John Collins, Avcon. Incorporation to a period of dates, board on sure. And that's kind of airport activities. Project Perry Police Airport.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is John Collins at Avcon. We have been your airport consultants since two thousand seven. It's really been an honor and a joy to serve with Londa and Ward and Melody and Jamie since then. And a lot's happened at the airport since two thousand seven. And really, I just haven't had a chance to meet most of you. And we do work daily with your staff. And so I just wanted a chance to come up and just review, provide a brief review of what we've done over the last several years and what we have coming up over the next five years, just to give you some idea of what we're expecting here. Also, I'll be respectful of your time. I'll go through some stuff and then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any question or discuss anything you might to. I mean, is there a clue for this? You can just go. Perfect. Got the mouse. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'll provide a quick overview of our company, who we are, what we typically do, what we're doing at the airport, and then you can answer questions you might have. Again, I'm John Collins at Avcon. We serve, I'm really your primary point of contact with Londa and Ward. You know, any kind of questions with the FAA or the DOT, anything that's happening on site. I'm your first person to call and then I can handle everything, anything we need to, with any other support staff that we have. Also, I did put on there a Mary Soderstrom, the second from the bottom. She was instrumental and just several years ago, we updated your airport layout plan and master plan for the airport. So we sat down with the airport and the county, we got public input, and we put together a twenty year plan for the airport. What do we want this airport to be twenty years from now? And so Mary is really instrumental in that. Calvin Palmer, I have on that. He's really my, my main, main, kind of, him and I work together on a lot of the products here at Perry. Work together. Each of us does side visits and just to make sure that we're keeping touch with what's happening here at the airport. So, Bridget, we are about a hundred person firm and we specialize in airport consulting, both at commercial service airports like Tallahassee, Panama City, but also my, my, my passion is general aviation airport like Perry. You know, a lot of people know, you hear about the commercial service airports all the time, all the international airports, and they're great, but there's over a hundred GA airports across the state. And those provide, you know, private users, corporate corporations use these airports all the time. It's a neat community. It's really a city by itself at the airport. And so we provide the services to help plan and design approvals, work with the FAA and DOT, all the funding that we need to really do what you want to do at the airport. One day if you want to call us, every three years, the FDOT provides an economic impact study. And they make it public. It's on their website right now. So what they do, they come to the airport and they look at all your industry, the kind of people coming into the airport, any businesses on the airport, any salaries being generated by the airport. And they say, because of the airport, here are the direct and indirect benefits to your region. And really, Taylor County would be the region for, for the airport. And the FDOT calculated that the benefit is about one point two million dollars to the area. So if the airport was not here, we would be, you know, you would not have the one point two million dollars in direct and indirect benefits. Not even to hotels that people might stay at when they fly through, restaurants they might visit, stuff like that. I think it's good to know that. You know, the number is always bigger than you think it is, but again, that's all put together by independent FDOT put up together for all airports. And so that was specific just for Perry Police Airport. So I'm just going to walk through some of the products that we completed here at the airport recently with your staff. The first one, it's really my favorite one, is the T hangar development, eight unit T hangar. And before that happened, there really wasn't anywhere to house airplanes. And so that's really the first product that they did here at the airport, is eight unit T hangar. And you can see we drive out there today. And typically, they're pretty full. Which, if you talk to any other airport in the area, they're always looking for new T hangars. They're maxed out. They need more T hangars. And so this provides the constant revenue stream for the airport to support whatever other, support your staff or maintenance at the airport. So, you know, the goal of us always is to make your airport self-sufficient, where you have enough money coming in to do whatever you need to do at the airport. That's the goal. And so having any developments is probably your best option to bring in revenue and be self-sufficient. The next one is, we did do a marketing and lighting project around two thousand ten. And the key with this project, we remarked your entire airfield. Because markings were, it's like roads, your markings were out over time. And so every five, eight years, so you need to remarket your airfield. But the important here is we want to remarket it, the length of your primary runway, one eight three six, is about four thousand nine hundred eighty six feet. It's shorter five thousand feet. And that five thousand foot threshold is really critical for your larger corporate aircraft who might want to come in, like your light jets. Because a lot of the insurance requirements made were they, they may not land at a runway less than five thousand feet. And so when we remarked it, we marked it longer. You had the pavement for it. You had plenty of pavement for it. So we marked it at five thousand thirteen feet, so you can get past that threshold to open the door for larger aircraft to come in here. The next part that we did, we completely rehabbed your main runway. As you know, I'm sure, asphalt breaks down over time. And so we rehabbed, we worked the FAA and the FDOT to fully fund a complete rehabilitation of your main runway. And it's still, its output today is working, it's working very well. The next one, again, talking about hangar projects, the next product is a corporate hangar development. Now, this one, it was fully hundred percent FDOT funded. It's about a sixty by sixty hangar. In the back of it, we have a restroom. And so that's really ideal for any kind of maintenance tenant. And I believe this hangar was leased before it was, before construction was done. The county had someone on board, they signed the lease before it was done, and it's been leased every day since then. So it's a great, another, it's a good revenue stream for the county, for the airport. Next, as I mentioned, we did update, did a full update to your airport master plan. The agencies, your funding agencies are part of you, it's about every ten years for a GA airport. Because things change. You have new tenants, you have new needs at the airport. And so we go back and we fill out your operations and we figure out, what do you need twenty years from now to do what you want to do? And so we completed that with both getting FAA and DOT for a whole night, but that was completed several, just a few years ago. Now, here's a product that was completed a couple of years ago. We're also doing a similar product here coming up very soon. I'll go to those in a minute. But your main apron, where all the airplanes park, it's concrete. And again, with these World War II airports, the pavement breaks down over time. That's, you know, it's the constant needs to rehab your pavement. It greatly cracks, the corners break off of your concrete slabs, the joint seals between your slabs break down as the water gets in there and it causes damage on the edges of your pavement when your base material washes away. And so we did, we completed two fifths. We've broken pavement up in five different areas. We were able to rehab two of those areas and now we have additional funding. Actually, it's on your agenda today for approval for an FDOT grant of a million dollars to finish the other three fifths of your pavement. So again, that's removal and replacing all your joint seals. It's going to repair all your cracks in your pavement. So it's just, it's one of those not so exciting projects, but it's also needed to make sure you have a long, an airport that's safe. Because when you do have a pavement that breaks down, you have little rocks and pieces of concrete that can break up and those can be ingested into your jet engine to boil it around to the prop wash. So, next, we did replace all of the airfield, the entire runway lighting system for your main runway. And you have those lights on the edge of the runway and you have your threshold lights on each end of the runway. And really, when we came in here in two thousand seven, it was all, it was the old type of lighting. It was an incandescent lighting system and the cables underground were all this duct buried, not in conduit. There was in the dirt, this cable in the dirt, and it was breaking down. There was constant needs to replace fixtures back, you know, fifteen years ago. But, but we did, we have the FAA funding, we completely replaced the system. So it's, we have new LED lights on the runway, which work a whole lot better, it lapses a lot longer, they perform better than incandescent lights. And we still conduit for all the, I'm sorry, conduit for all the cables. So it's, it really, that's your long-term answer. That's what, that type of lighting system is what all, you know, is still the current standard on both international and GA airports like ours. And then just recently, we did, as you'd aware, as you'd imagine, on airports, it's important to keep trees down around your airport. On the south end of one eight three six, there are quite a few trees south of the road that were, they're, they're higher than the approach surface. And so it became a concern. And so we worked with FDOT to get funds to remove the trees south of the airport. And we also had, we worked with Landon, Foley Cellular, I believe, is a landowner. We worked with them to get approval to do that. So that was a chore. But they, they worked well, but that's really they did. As long as we satisfied their concerns, they were, they were more than willing to let us clear the trees on their property. So feature product, where are we going? What can we expect over the next three or four years? First one, actually, the first is a wildlife, it's called a wildlife hazard assessment. And what happens is on the airport, wildlife can be a concern. You have birds. You can have bird strikes. You have deer on the airport. You can have coyotes, which, as Terry told, we do have issues with coyotes. We do see them on the airport pretty frequently. Some reason they like pavements, they like to hang out on the runways. So what the FAA does us to do, and they're paying for it, FAA is paying for it along with FDOT. And that FDOT portion of this product is also on your agenda for today for approval. But what we do is we actually hire certified wildlife, FAA certified wildlife biologists. They come to the airport four times a year, about a week, and they sit and they observe during different seasons. And they say, okay, here's all the kind of wildlife that we need to be concerned with. And here's our recommendations of things you can do to, you know, really get, you know, help prevent this wildlife from getting on the airport. Once our course is done, then the FAA will pay for those improvements, whether it's fencing improvements or whatever, you know, additional clearing, the FAA, that's all eligible for FAA funding. So that's just kind of step one to make sure that we can keep that wildlife off the airport. Last thing you want is if something hitting a coyote on the airport. Next, we do have, coming up very soon, and we have also money for it right now, is to rehabilitate your second line, the twelve thirty. It is also in, the pavement is getting in pretty poor shape. And also the runway itself is very flat. The FAA requires you have at least a one percent slope, cross-slope on your runway. And in some places, it's point two percent on the runway. So what happens is when it rains, the water doesn't run off as quickly as it really needs to. So when the airplanes are landing, they get hit, they get standing water, that can be really dangerous to the aircraft. So we'll be raising this center line as part of the project to make sure we meet that minimum requirement. But it's a three million dollar project and that's primarily FAA, I'm sorry, FDOT funded. The next one, this one's primarily FAA funded. It's kind of the master plan I think. There's new FAA rules about how they want your taxiways, which is kind of, is the pavements that is, where allows airplanes to get from the apron to your runway, to your roads on the airport. The FAA has new rules to reduce airplanes going onto a runway when they're not supposed to, called incursion. So there are certain geometries they want us to have out there at the airport. So this product is going to rebuild a lot of our taxiways, which they, they need rehabilitation anyway. The pavement's, pavement's in poor shape. And so this product is going to realign a lot of taxiways on the airport to provide more efficient access to the runways and also safer. They want, they want to have a few turns before they get to the runway. They just don't shoot right out on the runway not knowing that you're doing that. So, but again, that's, it is FAA, the FAA is pushing us to do that until the FAA says they would provide the money for it. But when we actually told them the actual price to do that, they, they asked to push it back a little bit. That's what we're doing. We're going to continue to work with them. Again, as you see, the five and a half million dollar product is a lot of work. But again, FAA is asking us to do it. They're saying they'll pay for it, but we just need to make sure that we have enough money from them before we can start with it. As I mentioned, we do have initial one million dollars in your agenda tonight. We also, I believe we have, we already had a half a million dollars available for previously. The total one and a half million dollar project to rehab your concrete apron is really to finish the work that we started a few years ago with FD, it's a hundred percent FDOT dollar. No penny comes out of the county's pocket if we have to pay them. And then here we get this more exciting one, the last one. In two thousand twenty five to twenty eight, you have about two point seven million dollars from the FDOT to build new hangar developments, whether that's T hangars, we can expand and we can, we can construct more T hangars where the one is right now, or we can look at corporate hangars, if you want more box hangars, kind of similar to the one that you saw a few minutes ago. So also, we'll work with your staff, we'll work with Londa and Ward and really figure out, what would you like to see at the airport? What's more beneficial to you? Do you want more T hangars, more corporate hangars? And then if you move ahead of that, and, but it's only a couple of years, three, three, four years down the road. Now, I do want to stress that since two thousand seven, every project that has been implemented at the airport is, has been one hundred percent funded by the FAA and the FDOT. So the county, the county is not made it any towards any of these improvement products at the airport. And that's the way we operate. We don't do anything unless we know that there's, there's funding to cover it. And so a big part of our job is working with the FAA and the DOT to make sure that the funding program runs along smoothly, that everything's in the system several years out, communicate clearly with them, make sure that once we can, that once the money, once the product comes to fruition, we have the money to pay for it. Then that can be the chore, is keeping up with everybody. The agencies, it can be challenging working with them at times, but we've been pretty successful so far. I'll just brief you these real quick. Again, I did stress, you know, everything at the airport is fully hundred percent grant funded. We know that we can't do anything unless there's 100% funding already established for it. Well, yes, that's it, as far as, we do try to use local subs as much as possible. Local surveyors, local geologists, local farms, and other. You know, immediately here in the, in the city or county, it might kind of be a challenge to find the specific resources that we need. But we do, every time a project comes up, we usually reach out to the county and say, can you have any local, this kind of sub or this kind of sub that we can talk to? But we really do want to keep it local as much as possible. Well, that's really it. Again, I just wanted to have an opportunity to meet you guys today and explain what we've done at the airport, what we have coming up. And if you have to answer any questions you might have, any kind of airport-related questions that have been on your mind. Okay?
Of these projects, these millions of dollars. I know what you said, it's 100% funded, but has it already been committed?
The FDOT dollars have, yes. Yes, so what the FDOT does, they have a five-year work program where you request projects. If I want to build a hanger five years from now, there's a certain time of year when you put it in the online database. To prepare for the airport, we want $2 million to build a hanger in 2028. And then the FAA, they, they will, District 2, they have a certain, they, they might have $15 million to distribute between all their airports. They will spread that money out, you get five years out. And so we know, once that happens, we know we have, they'd be asking $2 million and they only have 1.5. They'll put 1.5 in there, and we know, we can't have that money yet. But when that, you know, when we get to 2028, we know the FDOT will issue that grant. Yeah, so those funds are committed. Unless we, I will, I will, just like caveat, when COVID happened, the FDOT didn't go and pull money out of the current program from COVID. But that's a very, obviously, a unique situation. But again, that could happen. But barring something like that can happen, you know you're going to have that money current year. Now FAA, the FAA gives us $150,000 a year. But they, as a result of bipartisan infrastructure legislation that was passed by this administration about a year ago, there's an extra $159,000 available per year. And so with that money, you can roll, you can kind of save that up over four years. And so that's what we're, so we're working right now with the FAA to identify which project at the airport we're going to put that money towards. So we're working with LaWanda Ward to kind of figure out where. Now the FAA, FDOT pretty much, if you, if you want to build a hanger or a fuel farm, or, they'll, they'll support whatever you want to do on the airport. There's very few exceptions to that. The FAA, they really want you to invest your money in pavement preservation. So if there's any pavement on the airport that's not, less not, you know, less than 10 years old, they are going to expect to do investor money in the pavement preservation. So they have, FAA has a lot more strings than DOT has.
So with inflation, inflation is out. So what happens?
That's a great question. Actually, I just got, a couple of weeks ago, we had an annual DOT meeting in Orlando. And that was a big topic, is with inflation, the product costs go up 50%. It's, it's not uncommon. And so what we do with these pavement projects is we bid them in alternates. We might take, if you have a whole apron, you might break up into five different pieces. And so if we can't do the whole thing, maybe do three of them. But yes, we have to, when we're putting in projects five years from now, we have to include 10% per year inflation like that. We have to know, if we only need a million dollars now, let's put in 1.5 or 2 down the road, we have to do that now. Yes, you're, you're right. And what airports have been forced to do also, they have two projects, say, one project this year, one project next year. And they know that the cost for that product has gone beyond what they thought it was going to be. What they, they, they ended up having combined two years of funding to fund one project. Instead of doing two projects, you can just do one right now. It's really unfortunate, but it, it, we have to be flexible, we have to. And if there's ways to save money in the product during design, we certainly do that. If there's, there's things that we just don't actually have to have for this work, then we just leave that all, leave that out and just focus on really the essentials. Yeah, I'm hoping, it, it does look like costs have kind of plateaued over the last few months. We've seen that with some bids that came in, but still they're very high. It's just, you know, leveling up doesn't help out a lot, we've done so much recently.
I've enjoyed your presentation today.
One question. It looks like some, in some of your planning there, if I did my math correctly, over the next two years, you're expecting to invest about $10 million.
That's about right. Yes, if you can, if you count current projects and those that we anticipate now. I will say the five and a half million dollars that we had in there for taxiway realignment project, that's one that we're still coordinating with the FAA. We had that, we had that in the system. And we were actually supposed to start that this pa, this year, really just a few months ago. But we had a meeting with the FAA, they just said, look, we just don't have the money for it. Although in previous, we, we've been talking about this project for three years with the FAA. And on these conference calls, annual conference calls, they said, yes, we're good to go, it's a good project. It's important, it's important for the FAA to realign these taxiways, refund it. But then when it came down to it, they just, they didn't have the money for it. So that, we're still working on that one. But the other ones, yes, $3 million for 1230, one and a half million for the apron rehab, those are all funds that we currently have. And we're working, currently in the process of getting those bid documents finalized and kicking on those different bids.
Yeah, actually, wait, a $30 fuss can mess up a $6 million airplane, is that one of them?
Oh, absolutely it can. Airplanes are very expensive. Yeah, if you get a bird, especially jets, if you get a bird in those engines, that could be millions of dollars in damage to the aircraft. That's why it's important, again, these World War II airports, they're great, it's a great asset.
World War II airport?
Yes, sir, apparently, it was, you know, it was constructed during World War II, which is great. It's a great asset for the county, but there's also a lot of pavement, it's a lot of infrastructure to maintain. So we can, we can spend a lot of money over time just keeping it safe and where it is right now. Obviously, a lot of airports, the desire is to grow and to build more hangers and build more revenue generating facilities. But we also have to make sure it's a safe airport to operate at.
Okay.
Chairperson. I'd just like to thank Mr. Collins for our partnership. He does an outstanding job. AVCON does an outstanding job working with staff and working for our airport. And I would just like to say thank you so much for everything you do for us.
It's very much a team we're working, and we, and we enjoy working for you guys a lot, so appreciate the opportunity.
You guys operate under a continuing services contract?
We do, yes, sir, we do.
You've been there 15 years, so it's been renewed multiple times?
We were selected in 2007, and then we were also re-selected, I'm guessing 2012-ish timeframe? I'm not exactly sure when it was, when it was.
Since 2012 or since then?
No, we've only had two contracts so far.
What's the term on those contracts? They extend beyond five years?
I'm sorry, maybe three? I'm sorry, I can't, it is, yes, no, it's five years, it's only five years.
But I think there's an opportunity to renew, and then that contract will be coming up for renewal.
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon.
I think by the end of this year, I believe.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to item number 14. The Board to Consider Approval of Insurance Committee Recommendation or the Renewal of the County Health Insurance Plan as Agenda by Gary Nove.
So, I mean, if you guys remember, we talked, Joe Albrecht and Kane talked to you guys about this during our pledge workshops. So Oliver, this is exactly what he explained to us then. And I can just refresh that, which is the insurance is doing a 4% increase in the premium, but they're also giving us a, what they call a premium credit. And so the net is actually, we're actually saving $10,000 because of that. But the way that they're doing it, that's, that's just the way that they approach us with it. So recommendation is to accept that proposal.
Well, second dollar, say it now.
I, I, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
So for Gary and LaWanda, do we, do we ever go out in shock for a different insurance? Or do we just kind of take what these people and work with them to, to try to make it better?
They normally bring us several options for the insurance committee to, to consider. And then the insurance, but it's still with United Healthcare, so we do consider different plans with different benefits. But they, we have not gone out to bid in quite some time because we've been able to, we've gone, how many years have we gone without an increase, Gary? Since 2018?
Yeah, I think it's four years, I think it's a four.
Which is unusual. So because we have had no increase in our, in our rates, the decision of the insurance committee has been to continue to renew with slight variations in the plan if we need to keep that a flat renewal.
Yeah, and it's, and it's also, there's only one other, and that's Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So it's, it's you either going to give United Healthcare or Blue Cross and Blue Shield, because those are the only.
Networks.
Networks that we have in our area, that service our area. So you, you know, we just bid, there's just two companies that would be bidding for it. And so because we haven't had any increases, and also typically what we've seen in the past is when we bid it out, one may low bid one year to get your business, and then jack the price up for next year. And so we've just been working with United Healthcare. Now there may be a time in the future when it's, when they feel like it's beneficial to bid it out, and that'll happen whenever we'll be given that.
Yeah, I only, I only, I ask a question because I had someone that called me last week and was asking me, you know, did we, did we ever, you know, look for other opportunities? Because they felt like, and I, you know, just, I'm just, this is what I was told. They felt like that there could be other options where we could, it could be cheaper, as much as $8,000.
Well, you always have options with your plan. But I think that our health insurance provides a really great benefit to our employees. You can change the coverage and reduce the premium. But I don't know that we would find comparable coverage with what we have with this plan with a different company.
I think the question is just, you know, do we ever just look and see? You know, do we entertain looking to see if there's anything that might be more beneficial?
We consider, I would say we consider it every year with the insurance committee and, and consider different options. And, you know, there's, there's always options. But then, of course, the concern is if you change your coverage too much, it could affect the way that your plan performs. And so there's, you know, there's always, that's something that I, that we always have to consider. But there are, there are always options, and the options are considered.
I've said it many times, I'm probably the least knowledgeable person about insurance in this room. But, you know, I, I did have that call, and so that's why I asked the question.
I don't know that, that changing carriers would necess, I mean, that, I, I think that changing carriers isn't going to necessarily give you the reduction in premium as much as changing your plan, actually changing your benefit structure.
You know what? Okay. Did we need motion on that?
We got it already, we got it already.
You got it already? All right, the Court to Discuss Tax D application. 22 dash 414, based on this land and legal taxes.
So what happens in this process and what happened in this particular tax deed process is a company bought the taxes, the tax certificates for this particular piece of property that's here, which is described here as NL Smith subdivision, block 13, block B. And so what they, what the company did was they, they purchased the tax certificates, they sent it to, did everything to get it to go to bid. And that one went to bid to sell for a tax deed, no one bid on it. And so then the company refused to pay, to have the, the beads and stuff recorded, which is their responsibility, but they, they don't have to. And so when they don't do that, it goes on the list of land available for taxes. When it goes on that list, the county has the opportunity to purchase it if they want the property for something. And that's why we're notifying you here today, so you can look at it, but I don't think it's anything that you want to purchase. But anyway, that's the process. So we have to present it to you guys. You guys have 90 days to purchase it if you want it. And the purchase price was $5,000 and something on that. And if you don't, what happened is it'd go on a list that anybody can buy at any time they want to buy. And after three years, if nobody buys it, it goes to you anyway, so.
Where's it at?
NL Smith subdivision.
Where?
So I think it's Warner, it's, it's, it's the house on the corner where you turn to go to Mr. Dempsey's house on Warner. I think it's Warner Street or Warner Avenue. That house right on the corner. And it used to have like a trailer or something, I think it's been moved on.
It used to, it must have.
And there's a house there on, there's a house on the town, but I don't think anybody lives in it, it looks pretty rundown.
And a lot of water in the back.
And there's a pond in the back, yeah, like a lot of pond there in the back. So it's in the neighborhood, so I don't think the county would have the use for it, so. But anyway, process is that we notified you guys, and you have 90 days, purchase it before anybody else has a chance to purchase it, in case it is something that you want. So we don't have to do anything other than if you guys decided it was something you wanted first.
Okay. Ready? Okay, we go to counties from stamp items. The Board to Consider Approval of Grant Application and Supporting Document Required for Submission and Question Funding Assistance in the amount of $200,000 for the Taylor County Sports Complex, 2023, 2024 Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program FURDAP Funding Cycle as Agenda by Melody Cuts, right, right?
On the line, I believe, yes.
Hey, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Asking, good morning. This is the grant that we, you had approved before we're done. We're providing a $200,000 match as well as requesting $200,000 through the FURDAP program. The main scope of work is the construction of the new softball field. It also includes a little picnic area, parking facility improvement, improvements to the basketball court, and the planning of landscaping. And we selected those items, as you know, because they were the most cost-efficient, so the majority of the money was directed to the softball field. We did, as a matter of note, and very good news, we received word from FURDAP that we could do forward and submit this application that our grant that we were trying to get closed down has been closed down as far as the state. So we are okay to move forward with the new grant, which was very, very good news. We all know it was the tight timeline. And during the process, the staff person there that received the program resigned. So there were a few agents who were really holding our breath, but we're good to move forward now.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could ask, Melody, how many resignations in that agency were there through this process? Do you recall?
There have, there were nine staff people at the beginning of the year, and they are now down to two. So we've had a bit of a struggle as far as working with staff and getting shifted around. And there appears to be a bit of chaos with the state. So it's really been a struggle for us, as you well know, to speed this through and get the other grant closed down.
And I really appreciate staff's effort sticking with me as we move through this process because we all got a bit anxious over the closeout, knowing that there was such a impactful staff changes at the agency and, and struggling to, to get them to work with us, to accept our documents and do everything we need to do. So Jamie and Melody did a great job, you know, seeing this project through, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I tell you, last week when I opened that email saying to Mika I'd resigned, well, I can tell you, 6:30 in the morning, I was having a live heart attack. Contacted her shortly thereafter, but we are good to go. And if you approve any of your efforts with this, I would really recommend when we submit our split plan request that we include this as one of our requests so that we follow every step of the way to make sure we've done all we can to push this project through.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I support I support this this application and this process. But for twelve years, I have been trying for us to get more tournaments. And for twelve years, we have, how many tournaments have we had in twelve years? We have we keep adding to our complex. We're trying so glad that we can that we do and it's beautiful. It's probably one of the best standing area, but it's underutilized in terms of tournaments. And I don't know what else to say. I've gone, you know, you're the fourth administrator and we're still sitting here, y'all, with not many tournaments. And I know there was issues in the beginning, well, we need to do this and we need to do that in order for these people to want to come here, but here we are. What what do we need to do?
I don't know that we need to do anything that we haven't already done. I would expect to see that maybe in the fall, to see the utilization of the complex is what we're hoping for. If you'll recall, the board just recently approved the fees that we can charge for that and the pack that we need. That's already been sent out to at least one or two tournament organizers by Commissioner English, yes. So I don't I don't I wouldn't expect to see tournaments right now, but I would hope that in the fall we may have some folks taking advantage of our complex.
Well, I just there just seems like to me there needs to be somebody that that this is this is something that's that's reviewed often. You say, okay, let's 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 do this or let's do that. And maybe that's been done.
I believe it is.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit if you like. I mean, you know, if you're if you remember, we did just get the grass off the infield of the baseball fields to make the complexes an multi-use complex in order to to run, you know, baseball or softball tournaments. You know, those guys make they're scheduled up four months in advance, so schedules for the fall have already been made. So they said they may be able to throw one or so into the fall, but schedule hasn't been made. So there are no promises of them doing that. But they do have our lease rental criteria now. And their plan is to they they look to book every five weeks coming into the first of the year. Every five weeks, they look at the schedule of tournament in these locations.
So we're doing all we can do to promote.
You know, the only other suggestion I was have, I did speak to the chamber meeting before last and let them know that, you know, that's something that we're moving toward towards. We could, you know, maybe work with the chamber. And I did mention it to them to see if there's a way they can help us promote tournaments. And, you know, we I think we just had to get to that point before we could ask to partner with the chamber, but I did mention it to them.
We all know the economic impact, a positive economic impact that it would that it would make. And it's just that I would really like to see it used.
I understand.
I'm very proud of that sports complex and all the work and everything that's been put into it. And I'd just like to see more.
So possible, so one of the suggestions by the chamber was that maybe they could partner with us in forming a a tournament committee to help to help, you know, with this effort. And that can be something that I I just haven't moved on that yet, but that's that's something that we can certainly consider.
I'd sure like for you to do that and let's see see what happens, but thank you.
Do you need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Right. Or is that dollars out of the same amount?
And Mr. Chairperson, I just want to remind the board that if we do receive or awarded this grant, there will be a match.
Yes.
And that and I believe that amount is over it's going to be over the two hundred thousand. It's Melody, are you still on the line?
Of course.
What?
Yeah, it we we have an estimated, now this was an estimated cost of four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. But as you know, during the first public hearing, the we basically decided to keep it at the two hundred thousand dollar match. If anything over over that over that amount, the board will be responsible. We will not know until May of twenty twenty-three if we're being awarded the grant. We would receive the contract in July of twenty twenty-three and we'll have three years to complete the project. So, you know, you you don't have to worry about the match for, you know, a year or two from now, which gives you time, you know, playing your best playing practice. And while I'm while I'm and while I'm talking, I have a suggestion on your tournament. Why not reach out to a sports complex that you know is very, very successful and ask them for advice about ten fifteen years ago? We spoke with a sports complex director over near Panama City and he even offered to come over here and give a presentation on what they did for tournaments. And at one point, we also reached out to Suwannee County because they have a successful sports complex. And and Kenneth and I met with them and they provided some good advice. So, you know, you may want to reach out to to someplace that, you know, is very successful and ask them for advice on on how to recruit tournaments too.
I think that's a really good idea. Do you think you could do that?
Sure. As far as the match goes, I would just say that next budget work session, we need to make sure that we consider what that match is and go ahead and put it in the budget. And that way we'll have, you know, we'll have the commitment from the board if that's what you wish to do. And we'll we can set that money aside and we'll just keep it in mind between now and then.
Do you know about that if you're gonna get if we're gonna get awarded the the grant?
That should be a workshop about this tournament committee, right? Getting somebody from Panama City or Suwannee County or something like that.
I think that's something we can do in-house. We, yeah, we we just we can reach out to other organizations.
Yeah, I'm telling you, we need that for you. It just when you see the newspaper and you see what's happening, a thirteen fourteen year old doing something they got no business, something old over done years ago. Okay. Anything else for that? We don't need a grant, we don't need a motion to.
We need a motion to, right.
Right, yeah, that.
Yeah.
Did you do it? Okay. Thank you, Melody.
Thank you.
We order number seventeen, the board to consider approval of the Florida Department of Transportation FDOT public transportation grant agreement in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. An adoption of authorizing resolution for financial project number, uh, big, 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 Perry Foley Airport Plan as amended by the grant writer.
Resolution, I'm not wanting.
All the favor say no? Okay.
Where is it? Where is the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners and the State of Florida Department of Transportation have determined that it be in their mutual residence to facilitate development here in this project at the Foley, Perry Foley Airport to wit Perry Foley Airport Wild Lock Hazard Management Assessment and Plan.
Okay. Do we need the motion on that?
Yeah.
Motion, okay. Motion second, all the favor saying aye?
Aye.
And then we need another motion for the agreement.
Okay, do we have another motion for the? Motion? Motion second, all the favor saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, you got it. Go to eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The board to consider approval of the FDOT public transportation grant agreement in the amount of one million dollars. An adoption of authorizing resolution for financial project number, 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 big, 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 big Perry Foley Airport design rehab apron project as amended by the grant writer.
I shouldn't read the resolution, I'm not willing.
Motion second, Bishop.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners and the State of Florida Department of Transportation FDOT have determined to be in a mutual interest to facilitate development up here in this project in the Foley Perry Foley Airport to wit Perry Foley Airport Design and Rehab Apron Financial Project Number.
Read down the number, okay. All right.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion second, all the favor saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, need another motion for?
Agreed.
Motion second, all the favor saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, you got it. Number nineteen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Board to consider approval of Taylor County jail housing addition and rehab project design slash build request for proposal RFP yes, aid applicant as amended by the county engineer.
So this is a project that we were kind of asked to help facilitate. They have come across the availability of an FDL grant. It's actually four point six million, three and a half was for the housing addition itself, plus they're doing other upgrades to the existing facility, some locker replacements, some camera replacements, things like that. So the because of the timeline of this, it has to be finished like by May of next year. My suggestion to them was to do it into a design build format. That way we can kind of cut out one of those steps and solicit to where you bring a partnership at the table at the first time, that being the designer as well as the the actual constructor. So I put this package together for them. It follows pretty specific the Florida model jail standards. And then I worked pretty closely with Captain Stevens on developing the scope of work that you see at the the back of this. It's pretty extensive. There's a lot of work that they are trying to implement in a short amount of time that will, from what they're telling me, you know, take the facility from its aged condition up to a more workable, maintainable condition. So my hope is is that by putting this together, we can help get them through that phase one, phase two process to where we help them maybe look at the submittals that they get and then possibly participate at least a county administrator or so on the selection committee till you get to the phase two award, which is your physical dollar amounts. And then at that time, the jail staff would be the ones who actually administer the contract itself. So I don't know that we would need a lot of involvement after that fact unless it gets into more procedural type stuff and then you can provide some expertise, I hope. I hope that's the extent of what we wind up doing here, small front end.
And what do we need to do?
Well, this is a grant that as best I understand, it actually flows through Taylor County. So it has, we are the signature, if I'm not mistaken, on this to where those monies get allocated to us and then in turn allocated to the project.
I believe so. I believe we'll have to actually set up a a cost center and and handle the purchasing on behalf of the sheriff's office.
Or at least the those purchases flow through that same purchasing responsibility. But what you see with a design build format is there's a lot of that that happens behind the scenes because what we wind up doing in this format is you award the project to a partnership in the format of a G and P, which is a guaranteed maximum price. So once we accept that, you know, if they we encourage them to follow certain guidelines with respect to their solicitations, but we're not telling them you must use this sub, that sub, that sub. They have to work within that G and P at their own risk. So if the project comes in and it is less than that, what we've seen in the past is they typically roll those funds into a contingency account. And then as you get closer to even the project, there's no benefit in not spending it. So they typically find something else to use it on. But in the alternative to that, if the project gets going forward and you wind up coming in and they are a hundred thousand dollars short, they need it. So it's a it's a risk reward type format for a partnership. But it's about the quickest way that you can accomplish this and still be assured that you can get the work done and you won't be you have no more liability than the funds you have available.
And Kenneth, this this project only has about a year turnaround.
It's listed in here as May, I think it's May thirty of the next year. It is.
Damn, very. So this, from what I I'm understanding then, is we need jail improvements and they need capacity. That's that's what this is?
Yes, ma'am. Situated between the B pod and the C pod, which is that hexagonal looking building, they are going to place another building between those two. You're going to house some of your work release individuals. It provides them some additional capacity for the juvenile to separate them from the adult population. And I think there was a couple other types of cells in there that, you know, it's not my forte. So I'm not real clear on some of that. Happen, though, what you see in here is the design intent, so this this conveys to the people who are interested in this. This is kind of the concept of what they want to do. You guys come in and tell us the best way to achieve this. The building format in this drawing was one that they had already began working with some firm from further up the country. It is a much bigger facility than what they can physically accommodate in this space. So it has some revisions that need to happen. We put that in there, that here's a suggestion, but realize that you'll need to reconfigure and you're going to omit a couple of these things. I'm not looking for us to make those decisions, that's the jail staff, because they know what they need. And just, you know, and and they have to try to the best extent possible utilize the existing infrastructure of the jail versus new facilities coming in. We couldn't readily put that kind of information in here because of security implications. So we only make the drawings available for their review. So there's going to be a lot of activity before you see bids come in on it or interest come in on this because they will have to kind of figure out what is it you actually want to get done so that we can figure out if this is in our P O house. And then once we get that done, you guys will receive proposals that it'll be, let's say, five different firms and they'll come in here and say, I am the best one for this. And the next one to get up here, I am the best one for this. We'll go through that ranking criteria that's listed in here. It'll be ranked in order of highest to lowest. Once you get to that point, the board, and I'm assuming a jail representative as well, or sheriff's department representative, will go through and say, okay, you're the best one, let's talk price. So it's not till you get to that phase two that you actually talk monies because it's a professional services.
Chair, I like a motion to approve this package for the jail housing.
Motion second, all the favor saying aye?
So it is a tight timeline and realize I'm going to advertise this as soon as I I have a couple of highlighted areas that I want them to finalize. And once we do that, it's going to come back. I think I put in here October, October timeframe.
This is realistically doable on May?
You're you're gonna buy it because of how fast it is. But the good thing is is they know how much money is available. They'll either think they can do it and try it or they won't. So you'll know who's right. This is about the best way we can figure it out.
Thank you.
General Business, number twenty, board to discuss Hardest Park renovation as amended by Commissioner Peter.
Yes, thank you.
You know, I'm hearing another time sensitive project here. And if I'm not mistaken, this project has been executed and awarded, really?
The the grant.
Back in twenty. Twenty twenty.
No, not for the not for the restore funds portion. So the land and water conservation fund portion was executed in twenty twenty. But we didn't we did not move forward on the project because the project has to be completed in entirety before we can seek reimbursement for the land and water conservation funds. So we did, we just recently received the grant agreement for the Restore Act funds portion, which is the majority of the project.
That was in, what, May?
Uh, May or June.
It was either May or June.
Right.
Okay, so I know that when we started talking about this and, you know, we went through the S E Ps and all that, all that stuff. We've gone through a lot of stuff that we we could have started the project, we thought then, this this year, back in the We've gone through a, a lot of stuff, uh, that we, we could have started the project, we thought then, this, this year, back in the spring. But we decided not to do that, because we didn't want to interrupt the summer, uh, usage of the park, which is heavy. Then we said, well, we're gonna, we'll start on it in the fall of this year.
No, 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 no ma'am. We, we cannot start this project until you have those funds available. That didn't happen until two months ago.
Right, yeah.
So we could not have started this last year.
I was going over what we discussed previously.
I think at that time, we did not realize it would take an entire year for treasury to approve the grant for, you know, Gulf Consortium. And treasury to approve the grant application. But that took, a- and this is the first, this is the first grant we've received going through the Gulf Consortium for these funds. So we really just haven't experienced that yet. So the fact that it took an entire year to get approval of that, of that grant agreement is, has impacted the timeline.
Okay, so what, what is the timeline now? When, when are actually we going to start on this project?
Okay, so Kenneth is working on the documentations in order to advertise and receive proposals for the, the topographic survey. I think that the assumption was that we just needed a boundary survey and that is not what we need. We need an actual topographic survey. We cannot utilize the contractors that we have un- under contract because of the way that was procured. We have to follow treasury procurement guidelines, which are very, very strict, very onerous. So Kenneth ha- has just about finished the first draft of the request for, um, qualifications, right, on an RFP.
I sent it, I sent it back to whoever Evan and Daniel is.
Right.
These are like the, the intermediary step between us and the Gulf Consortium, or something, I believe.
Right.
I sent that to them yesterday.
Correct. And if they approve the format that it's written in, because we do not want to take a, a risk of not getting reimbursed. This is a high dollar project. As soon as we receive approval, or if we need to make any changes because of the two CFR two hundred requirements and all the language that has to be in those procurement documents, that were not in the original documents. For our, our in-house contractors, then that will be, that will go out, um, we'll advertise for that. And I would say that process will have probably a sixty day, maybe a sixty day turnaround from, no?
Yes, absolutely. So we, we have on, on contract, under contract, like I questioned Mr. Collins. We have three different engineering firms that we could have utilized issuing a task order and having them begin surveys within two weeks. Unfortunately, after the review that was done by these two individuals, Daniel and.
So that's the Ball Memorial Group and neighbor Skiplin and Nickersden.
Yeah, I don't know them.
Right.
Other than, they reviewed it and said, oh, well, we think that you need all these additional provisions in there. These are discrimination, um, kickbacks, debarment, antitrust, Title VI. I mean, they go, it's just, it's very onerous. We had the bulk of that stuff in there that was pertinent to federalized contracts with the state. We've been using these for years, so it was, it was not unreasonable to believe that the procurement amended, or the solicitation that we acquired these contracts with wouldn't be acceptable, because we've been using them for federal projects. They weren't. So I've spent the better part of the last, all day yesterday and Friday and a bit on Thursday, trying to incorporate all these new number two, part two hundred CFR obligations in there and rewriting that entire solicitation. To try to get it to a point that these guys will be willing to say, yes, we think if you use this, you can get your money reimbursed. I sent that to them last night as a first draft and said, please review. Assuming they get that back to me and say, yes, we're okay with this, then I'll have to bring that solicitation to you guys. You have to approve it for advertisement. Then we advertise for no less, and, uh, she asked me this yesterday, and I believe it says thirty days in there for professional services. But let's just assume it's anywhere between two weeks and thirty days. Then you get those back, much like the design build, we'll still receive presentations from these guys if we need to. Then you can award it after that. So it is unnecessarily interjected at least a two month delay from what we believe we were sitting on ready to pull the trigger. Now, I am going to try my best to start, we've got the horizontal layout of what we intend to do down there. But it's just a two dimensional picture of it. There is a lot more design information that has to be done. I think I can start doing some of that and hopefully then just paste it on another surface. That's what I'm going to do, so I'm not just sitting here waiting on a product to then begin working later, because I understand what the timeline is. As long as you guys understand that, and it's not the most popular position from staff level, but you have a very small percentage of the small amount of dollars that is controlling the overall project from a timeline perspective. Which I don't necessarily agree with. When you have a lion's share coming from the Restore Act and a small amount, smaller, much smaller amount, coming from the land and water conservation. Why am I beating myself up to try to meet that deadline when it's such a little bit of this?
Well, now remember.
I said it's not a popular position.
Two hundred thousand is two hundred thousand. And there are some concerns with that. I, I don't disagree with Kenneth, but my, what I don't know, I know the land and water conservation funds, there is no timeline extension. And again, in order to receive reimbursement, the entire project has to be completed. We could not submit two hundred thousand dollars worth of expenditures and ask for reimbursement. The entire project has to be completed. So, and then the Restore Act grant agreement has a deadline of January first, twenty twenty, no, January thirty first, twenty twenty four. And the Gulf consort, excuse me, the land and water conservation deadline is twelve thirty one of twenty twenty three.
Twenty three, twelve, what, twenty one?
Twelve thirty one of twenty twenty three is the deadline.
And the other one was twenty four, January of twenty four?
So, yeah, it's basically the same timeline. What I don't know is if we can ask for a time extension with the Restore Act funds.
I thought she said that that, and that, the Restore Act timeline was kind of established based on the land and water conservation timeline. Because you knew you had to have it finished by.
Correct.
Twelve, by twelve twenty twenty, twenty twenty three.
What I don't know is if that can be extended and what type of process that is. If that is actually a grant amendment that could take another year, which we don't want to do.
And my only point in bringing that up was, we understand the timelines. We are going to put a very diligent effort towards accomplishing that timeline within those grant, um, restrictions. We're not going to just not do it because it is that tight. But I'm just suggesting that you be mindful that it is that tight because of something that is, and pardon my expression, but the tail wagging the dog here, because a small, a small portion is saying. Overall thing has to be done quicker than if you want this. And I just.
Well, I mean, it is real close, like one's, uh, uh, the very, one is at twelve thirty one.
But that was set because of that.
Okay, so without the two hundred thousand, where would we be?
Still set, it's still a million dollar project.
You can move that, that, oh, yes, 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 it's still a million dollar project, but I think she means timeline.
No, I mean, what if you didn't have the two hundred thousand?
Actually, we don't know what it's going to be until you get the bid back.
Okay.
But realize that we, we're sitting on about an eight month construction window, which is kind, it's, it's dual, but it is aggressive, given where it's at. Logistically, it'll be a nightmare down there. Um, because you don't really have the luxury, given the timeline that you have to finish it in, you will be in the bulk of the, the using season.
Yeah, that's, that's what, you know, our big consideration in the beginning is we, we were trying to start this right after Labor Day and have it done before, say, spring, right? When people start using it. And so, you know, I just wanted an update of where we, where are we on this?
We're at the point that we are moving forward. We're trying to get the documentation in place and approved to where we can solicit for a survey for the project to use as a foundation for finishing the design. Once that design is finished, we will put it into a solicitation package and we'll advertise it.
So if I'm following you correctly, then probably October would be the, the timeline before, uh, you come back with, uh, to us, right? And then after that, then once you put in the bid request, um, no, that, that is the bid, that is the, the survey.
That's right. So once we get the survey back, then we'll put the design package together when we tie it up. And then you will see me come back, probably towards the end of the year, with a design package that would be for constructing during twenty twenty three. With the completion of, hopefully, like November, so that we have a little bit of margin on the end.
So that would take us right straight through the, the summers.
Yeah, ma'am. Uh, you tell me how to get around it.
No, I'm, I'm just, just making a comment.
My guess is you're going to see some shovels hidden, you know, right there in that memorial.
Well, it's a, you, you believe it's an eight month construction project, so it's just.
Backing into it, that's about all we have available, is eight months.
So, uh, unfortunately, the need for this type of survey has, and, and this is new to us. We, we haven't had a, you know, a grant agreement through, through treasury like this. And we just didn't realize until we actually got the grant agreement in hand, the type of survey we would need. But that has.
Yeah, well, in all fairness, um, the type of survey that we would need isn't, isn't a surprise. You're going to have to have a topographic survey if you're doing anything construction and, and site, site modifications. What was a surprise was the inclusion of all these additional federal components.
Yeah.
That, that was the.
Well, originally, I think staff thought that it would just need a boundary survey.
Not this that.
I understand that, that I didn't say you felt like that. Others staff felt like it just required a boundary survey, so that did impact our timeline.
So there were other variables that came into play that was unanticipated.
Of course.
You know, with all this, like you just described, all this stuff that they, that, that they want, the list that you went over. But I just wanted to note where we are, how we're going with it, and when's it going to be finished?
Our mission would be to, like, twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three, or at least a bit worse than that.
Well, and, and I can say too, an additional concern is that if we do not utilize the funding from land and water conservation funds, that if we actually return those dollars. I think the concern is that.
Would, would.
I don't, I don't know if it would or not. So I know that's a concern raised by staff. And so we are mindful of that. But I completely understand Kenneth's position as far as that driving the timeline. And this may all be, I mean, we don't even know what's going to happen once we receive proposals on this, on this project. If it's going to, if we'll have sufficient funding, I hate to even say that, but it is a concern right now. So, you know, I think that even though we have a timeline in mind, we really aren't going to know where we stand until we receive proposals back. And we actually get some type of timeline from the chosen contractor.
So if it, if worse came to worsen, and the cost to construct this way over exceeded what we have, um, asked for here, then can we go back? Or does that, you have to go through another SCP?
No, you don't have to amend your SCP, but I, you would have to ask for a, an amendment to your grant agreement, which could take months and months and months, I'm afraid.
But the reality is, is you will know that at the time we receive those proposals back.
Yeah, before we start construction. So I would say worst case scenario would be that we would have to delay the project while we're going through an amendment to our grant to ask to move funds. But then you would lose your land and water conservation fund.
And you could, you could supplement that with your request under Restore Act.
You could.
As well as put a more reasonable timeline, because of our lost year, we could maybe put that back in the timeline for the project.
We could, but I think, I do understand staff's concern that if we don't utilize those funds, that it would impact us as far as future funding.
Yeah, we don't, you know, we've never done that before. We've tried to use, um, you know, we've tried, we've tried not to do that before. And, you know, I, I, I guess in the overall scheme of things, two hundred thousand is not that much, to, to me, a thing like an awful lot.
Percentage wise, it's, you know, it doesn't, it, it just caught me by surprise that we're having, we're focused so much on that timeline and procedural wise, when. Yeah, I tell, you know, thanks, thank you very much, so we'll come back to you another time. And just forward ahead with the rest of it.
But we'll, we'll know more soon. I would say before we get, um, overwhelmed with, you know, worrying about the what ifs, let's continue to move forward. And when we receive those proposals back, we'll really know where we stand and what we need to do.
I appreciate y'all, you know, you're, you're working on this and, and you've had some bumps in the road. I, I, I see that, but I, I appreciate y'all's hard work on this.
It's been, this hasn't been fun.
I can't agree with Kenneth on that.
Number twenty one, board to discuss boardroom microphone as amended by commission people.
Okay, last meeting, there was some folks here that said they could not hear. And I, I, I know that's one, one meeting, but over, over time, I've had quite a few people here to say that they could not hear what was going on. For me personally, it's even hard for me to hear what's going on back there or over there. And, you know, if we had microphones, even if we, and I know when you and I talked, you said, well, the whole system would have to be over, overhauled. Um, and I guess when we put the system in, we didn't think about that we might need microphones. Even if you passed a microphone around or something where people can hear.
The problem is the system that we currently have, you, you cannot run the microphones, it's a separate, it's, it's separate. You cannot run them both at the same time. It would produce an incredible amount of feedback. So the system that we had installed during COVID, that we utilized CARES Act money for, was really focused on trying to allow people to hear the presentations, um, when they.
Outside, remotely.
It's hard to have both because of the way this, this room is built. Um, I know in the past that we have, we had the, the panels put up to try to absorb some of that feedback. Um, that's why we have that hanging there, is to try to muffle the feedback when we are projecting out into the hall. Um, and when we met with the company that installed this system and made it all possible for remote viewing and remote participation, they said, because of the size of the room, um, it, it would, it should be small enough that everyone should be able to hear. And I, even when we did use the microphones, if we used the microphones, then people couldn't hear us on the recording. Um, so now we, so I don't think we've had any recent complaints about people who were remote viewing. But it almost seems like you would, we either have to choose one or the other, or we need to go out and see what it would cost to completely revamp the system.
We've, we've, we're halfway there. We, we, we've got a halfway fix, okay? We fixed it so people outside can hear. And how many people tune in there each time, do you know?
No.
You have no idea. There's no way to go in there and say, this many people listen in?
No, I can, I can check and see if there's a way for.
We've halfway done it. We've fixed it for the outside people, but the people in here, some of them can't hear. And I'm one of them. Uh, and I do have hearing aids and I still can't hear sometimes. So I just think that, what can we do? Can you, can you just see what it would take to fix it right instead of halfway?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I hate to call it a halfway fix. At the time that.
It is though.
Okay, so at the time that we had the system installed, there, the technology wasn't available to project the sound into the same room and remotely. I can check and see if we could, if there's an, you know, if there's any different technology, of course, we can check that. But I, I think part of the problem is, from what I understand, this has been a struggle for years and years because of the. this has been a struggle for years and years because of the way the room is, because of the, the way the room is. The, you know, you've got the high ceilings and sound just kind of bounces all over the place. You know, we may have to install some type of panels to, to muffle that, that rever, you know, that reverb effect, and I can certainly, I mean, we'll be happy to get quotes.
I mean, I'll just, don't, don't you think that the public, when they come, should be able to hear what's going on?
Well, of course, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing any point. I don't, but I don't, the last meeting was the first complaint I had heard.
First complaint you've had.
Yes, ma'am.
But I've had people over time, a lot of times, say they couldn't hear, hear. A lot of times, people, we even had people there say, I didn't hear what you said. Can you say that again? And I think they're gonna probably approach us before they approach you. I don't know, but it seems like that's the way it goes, that we get the complaints. But not to say that you don't get complaints, but I just think we, we need to be able, we need to be able to hear, and they need, need to be able to hear us.
Okay, you're gonna look into that, let's see about getting, okay. Need one else with the three picks, right? All right. You go to 21, eight, Board to discuss adoption of resolution to Rhett Willington in recognition of his heroic act as of June 30th, 2022, as agenda by the Commissioner Peter.
I think this person is deserving of us to put together a, a resolution recognizing what he did. He put himself in danger, and he saved someone, and I think that's heroic. And the least we can do is to have a resolution in his honor. So, I'd like for us to, you know, hopefully agree that we'll do a resolution and then get it prepared, and then get with, with him and the family and see when would be the best time for, for it to be presented. I understand he's a firefighter, and I don't know what his schedule is, but would certainly want to have it so that him and his family could be here if, if they so wished.
That's him and his sister. Is that one of the.
It's a design.
Chief Home Office. Is that right?
So, I'll make a motion that we prepare a resolution honoring Rhett Willingham.
Yeah. Hold on a second, I'll say aye. Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the Board to consider approval of budget transfer from landfill reserve as agenda by the county ministries.
As the Board, I think, is well aware, we are having some challenges meeting our expenditures in the solid waste collection department. Specifically, fuel has become a challenge because our, our monthly invoices or our monthly fuel usage usually hovers around $10,000 a month, from $7,000 to $10,000 a month. The last, the last inventory billing was $23,000. And I'm, I don't know how much that will change, especially now in the end of the year. As you know, the solid waste reserves have been depleted. So, what I would like to do is utilize our landfill fund and pay for fuel and the cost of the mailouts for the solid waste, the solid waste assessment, public hearing, potential changes out of the landfill fund. And I'm estimating the fiscal impact to be somewhere around $90,000. It could be less. If it's more, I will come back to the Board and ask for permission to spend more funds.
Okay.
The last transfer sum recently about 15.
That was $56,000. That was from solid waste reserves, and that was to pay for tipping fees for the remainder of the year. And now our, our fuel usage obviously is, is over what we could have ever anticipated at the beginning of the fiscal year.
That's right.
We think this 90 would carry us on to the.
I hope so.
Mr. Chair. All right, what are you doing along the two? Looking at all the, the problems that we have with roll-off. You know, I reported two, three weeks ago about a certain roll-off that has household trash in the yard trash den. And it, this one person looked at it and then went back over the weekend, then went back in the first of the weekend, and had lots of household and mixture. I reported that, and then, again, this person has, took pictures and said, nothing's been done. They're still doing that. So, what are we doing to get a hold of all the, the things that is costing us more money? The problems, what are we doing to address the problems?
I am working with the department head on a face-to-face basis. I know that we have quite a few new attendants. We have people that were moving from side to side. We are using public works employees to try to fill those slots. Our focus has been on keeping our roll-off sites open. So, you know, if something like that comes up, I will address with the department director as soon, you know, as soon as I hear about it, and I can know that we're continuing to have problems if, if, if that's the case. Unfortunately, if it's something that happens over the weekend and, say, the compactor's full, then I think that we have to utilize the containers that we have on the ground.
Is that what's happening?
I don't, I don't know which site that you're referring to, but that could be part of the problem.
I just, you know, I'm just concerned that we keep just putting more money and more money into something, but yet we still have issues that are there, they've been there, they continue to go on, and we need to get a handle on that and try to figure out how we can stop that. I understand you, we've had shortages, but whoever's working there, are they, do they go through the exercise or get out and make sure people are not putting household garbage in, in the lem den and all that? Are we actively working with these people?
As far as I know, but I will, I will address it again.
The guy Harrison Blue does. I'll give you, I'll let you know that he does, for sure.
The guy Harrison Blue does.
So, I mean, I.
Sorry, Mr. Kenneth's comment.
He said that he's attended at Harrison Blue does.
He, he's, he's real attentive. I mean, you can't pull past his building without him coming out. He will look in the back of your truck. He will tell you, Ben, one, two, three, or four, put it in this compactor, or put it in recycle, and he will watch you.
And, and we have some great attendants. I've got one in mind that time. Steve, is that his name? Everybody brags on him, and they take him food and drinks, and they give him Christmas gifts. And I get all kind of praises about him and, and a lot of the elements. And, you know, it, it only takes one. And, and, you know, and overall, I think we've got some really good attendance. But you still gotta get a handle on those that are not doing what they're supposed to do. They're not coming out of the building. They're not making sure that this stuff goes in the right bin. Because it costs us money.
You would have to have a person standing up on the hill 24, 24/7, make sure stuff was in the right order. There's not, there's not enough employees at the site to manage the hills and the compactor at some time. And we'd have to hire more people and cost more money to make sure there was nothing put out on the top of the hill. I mean, just, you walk from here almost to courthouse parking lot, just to get up on the hill to my side. And the man's there, and he's got two different compactors, and he's busy, he'd be in for both of them. And there's no way a man can be on the hill.
And I understand that, and maybe we put out more signs. I don't know if that would help or not, but in this particular case, the person that called in, took pictures, said the person never came out of the air-conditioned building. Okay? So, I understand when you've got somebody that's overloaded like that, and he's doing the best he can. And we've got employers that are out there doing the best they can do, but we've got some that are not.
And we're short on employees, on the truck drivers and attendants, I mean.
Well, we may have to look at the services we provide them.
Well, we're gonna have to come up with more money to pay them more money to get more paperwork. People are gonna have to do.
Well, we need to look at all the options. That's an option, too. But, you know, one of the, one of the problems that I've just identified and presented is something that's costing us money. And you're looking at the end of the year, when we're so far in the hole, what can we do to fix it? How, how, how do we fix the C and D? Somebody needs to get a handle. How much C and D is there that we're, that we're dealing with that's costing us money?
How many of these problems just started?
Say again?
How many just started? How many of these problems just began?
They've been here a long time.
Exactly.
And we have talked it and talked and talked.
But we haven't been here.
Now, you ain't been here, but.
You're right.
I've been here for 12 years.
But for two years, we continuously had to move money because this fund runs out.
That's right, because we've got problems that have not been fixed. And I know in 12 years, and Jim, you've been here 10. Thomas, you've been here, what, six?
Yep.
So, yeah, these problems have been going on and on, and it's time to fix them. I'm not pointing a finger at you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I do believe that it's, it's, I don't know how it's with the C and D to identify how much we have unless it's stopped at the gates and, and identified at the gates. And because this has been a practice for so long, it's, it's difficult to determine how do we, you know, when, when we've taken C and D and we've taken vegetative debris since 2006, without stopping people, identifying the amount, and charging them for it, it, I don't, it has set a precedent that it's going to be difficult to recover.
We've dove ourselves into a hole.
So.
We gotta start digging out of that hole, or every year, we're gonna go up on that assessment to pay for stuff that keeps, continues to go on and on. And you know, when you have people to say, I took all kind of stuff up there, nobody ever asked me about it. Nobody ever came out, you know? That's an issue. That's an issue, and I'm not gonna monitor a roll-off. That's not my job to monitor a roll-off.
It's not. And so, we will continue to address it if, you know, if I hear something from a citizen or I witness something, or if I hear from a commissioner, I will address it. And we will continue to try to make sure that our attendants are responding as they should. Because not only do they need to make sure that people have a decal or a card, they need to direct people to which container to go to.
They need to, that's right. You've got the keyword there, they need to. And, you know, yeah, we've got problems, and, and we're never gonna fix it 100%. I mean, that's just, that's just never gonna happen. But there may be some things that we might could, could do a little bit better on. That's the only thing that I'm saying.
I, I don't.
Because I'm getting the calls.
I actually.
About this, this, uh, this assessment and how people can't afford it. Are you getting any calls about it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, well, then we're all getting calls about it. And what are y'all doing? So that, you know, people ask me, what are you doing about it? What are you doing? So, I mean, there's just a lot of citizen concern right now. I'm one commissioner with concerns and, you know.
Well, I, and I do think that because our intention has been to go as long as we possibly could without increasing that assessment, of course, we don't want to, you know, I, I understand we want to live within our means. We want to operate as efficiently as we can. But I think that, you know, because the assessment has not been changed for so long, since 2006, and because of the practices that were put in place that we all inherited, it's made it a very difficult situation.
Yeah, and how about 2020? You know, we could sit here and, and, you know, I'm, I'm just as guilty as anybody. We've sat here and we've allowed it to go on. We've sat here, we've not, we've not, we've not solved the problems. We never really seriously sat down and said, this is what, what we're gonna do, what we can do. We talk about it, and we push the can on down the road, and we push it down the road, as Commissioner Moody has said many times since I've been, he's been here. But we just keep talking about it and pushing it. But, yeah, and then we get ourselves, we're dug into a hole, and all of a sudden, we have to come up with this extravagant increase in assessments just to make ends meet. So, I mean, everybody knows that you can't keep the same cost forever. I mean, we know that. Everything that we deal with every day has increased in price. But we need to be looking at some of, we need to look, look at the cause and the effect. Seriously, instead of just talking about it.
I make a motion to approve the transfer. I'll say it. Hold on a second, I'll say aye. Okay. This man says no. Okay. Okay, you got anything else?
I did want to notify the Board formally that we have hired a parts and recreation manager for not only the sports complex, but for all county parks. His name is Dustin Russell. He has been promoted from the solid waste mechanic. He's been employed by us since 2017. He is, he has experience in landscaping, maintenance of equipment, scheduling, inventory management. He's very eager, he's very energetic, and I am very excited to have him on board. I believe that he will be integral to moving the sports complex forward. We've already talked about tournaments, and I'm excited to have him part of the team. Very Dustin Russell.
Yes.
I would like to publicly thank the staff who has all, they have all pitched in over the last three months, I think it's been, that we've been without this person in this position. Everyone has pitched in. I appreciate it. Having a full-time person on site, I think, will help us with some of the maintenance needs that maybe have gone unmet just because of time constraints. We're gearing up for football that starts tonight. So, we're, we're very excited to have him on the board.
Do you support him?
Yes, thank you. I also wanted to take the opportunity to show the Board that Commissioner Debs has been honored by the North Board of Regional Planning Council with a James H. Montgomery Certificate of Outstanding Attendance. And, and this is for his attendance at every scheduled meeting during program year 21, 22.
Very good.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I don't look like we beat up on you, and we probably do. That's part of me, I reckon.
Yes, sir.
All right, we, we, we try to satisfy the constituents, do the best we can. All right, we go to comments and concerns from the public for non-agenda items. Anyone from the public? No one? No one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Comment and concern, uh, board information. Committee.
Mr. Chair, I just, I asked a couple of these agenda items, I believe, are really workshop topics. If there's not gonna be action taking on these items, wouldn't we be better served to put these on our scheduled workshops?
Which ones are you talking about?
Number 20 and 21. No action was taken. We could have discussed all these in the workshops, eh?
So, what's the difference? What happened, what was wrong with discussing them today? Took 15 minutes.
Why couldn't we wait? That's what a workshop I thought was discussed, designed to do.
But we can have it perhaps at the next meeting.
Okay, the more discussion. We can do some of this at workshops, and I don't have a problem doing a workshop and doing it now.
Well, I think if we were gonna do that, and we knew we were gonna take action, if we're gonna have these kind of discussions, at least at the next meeting, we could have, I guess, a direction or a consensus from the Board instead of just having a continued discussion, there's no business or no action.
I don't see whether there was any harm in discussing it today, but if you wanna dictate the agenda, that's fine.
I'm just trying to make sure we're gonna abide the procedures we set forth.
And what does the procedure say?
I thought that's what workshops were designed for, workshop topics, that no action's gonna be taken on.
gonna be taken on.
Right. Any more discussion? Thank you, Mr., thank you, Commissioner Miller. Okay.
Uh, LaWanda, do we still have the, um, inmate work crews working on the roads, and, and what are they doing?
As far as work on the roads, that, that is typically off-season. Right now, I think their primary focus is the sports complex, obviously, and keeping cemeteries mowed, keeping our parks clean, um, and when they're not mowing, is when they can have a little more time to work on, um, you know, cleaning ditches and items such as that.
So with the, with the, um, with the company that we just hired to do our roadside mowing, and they, do they do weed eating, or they just strictly mow?
No, they do weed eating as well.
And trash pickup.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, and trash pickup. Weed eating and mowing.
Seems like they have, what, four cycles, I think, per year?
Four, with the ability to schedule five. So we're actually getting ready to start another cycle after the last cycle, they're still doing some, some cleanup from the last cycle that they didn't, that they didn't get to, and then they're getting, like I said, we're trying to get another cycle in before the end of the fiscal year.
How, how did they know where to go? Has somebody, you know, given them a map of every road that we have?
That we have a list that they-
Oh, they were road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
But this was their first cycle, so I think there were some things-
I gotta get accustomed to everything, and this is still four mowing cycles a year? That's what we're still getting?
Yes, ma'am, as far as I know.
Okay. The other question I have is for the road grading. How often, I know when I first came on, we were grading about every three weeks, so how, how, at what intervals are we grading now?
It's about every three weeks, as far as I know.
On every road?
Well, the weather, the weather, the weather is the way they face the grading.
But aside from the grading, though, they, they hit every road, I mean, aside from the weather and all, they hit every road?
Unless there's a reason that they don't grade. Now, sometimes we do have residents who ask that a road not be graded, and of course, you know, I know we've had some new people, but as far as I know, they are grading our, our dirt roads every three weeks, if they're county maintained.
So we can tell our constituents, every three weeks, are any weather, weather power?
Or, or if, unless there's been a, a request not to grade a road, or to skip cycles.
I don't think there's many of those in my district, I know of one at least, but, okay, thank you.
We have three different formats, one is a standard cycle, one is a will call, that's, they only go when they're called, and another is as needed, because it may not be because of the traffic levels, that it doesn't need it on every three-week cycle.
That's, that's what I was trying to say, I mean, it depends on, there may be requests to not grade, or, or whatever.
So it's not that all of them get every three weeks more in the weather, if they don't need it, they skip it?
I, from what I understand-
It's a big drought, too wet, and they have to skip it.
Yeah.
And then you, you might have a log crew move in on the road, it messes it up, the school bus can't go, so they got to take time off the other grade and go back to that road to fix the road where the log crew messed up, so it's kind of a-
And the grader operator has a little, I mean, they do have the ability to use their own judgment as far as if, yeah, uh, from what I understand.
They're doing a good job with the grading, I, overall, in my district, they've done a good job grading, I haven't, I haven't had to leave it.
Well, we had that, we have identified some training opportunities on some of the roads, um, where they may need to bring some of the material back on the road, and Hank's been working with our crews on that, like I said, we have some new operators, and, and then we also have a patch crew with our most experienced operator, um, for a specific type of, it's something that's not routine grading, but I know we've, we've had some challenges with, you know, some of our experiences walked out the door, so we've had some challenges with that, but, um, Hank is working with our crews, and he's actually personally demonstrated to them some different techniques that they can use.
Well, I mean, you've got people that have left, and you've got new people to train, and I'm sure it takes, I'm sure it takes a while.
It does, and it's not atypical in that department for people to stay for a short period of time, and unfortunately, we do lose some of our folks to the state, um, because of, of higher pay, so, um, you know, that, that does happen, so we have some turnover, um, but we continue to work with our folks the best we can.
Thank you.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.